Call the meeting to order, please. This is the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees' Regular Meeting of Thursday, September 17, 2020. The time is 7:00 PM. Please call the roll.
President Sells.
Here.
Trustee Gallegos.
Here.
Trustee Jiza.
Here.
Trustee Evans.
Here.
Trustee Pollak.
Here.
Village Manager Francis.
Here.
Village Attorney Mars.
Here.
Also present Village Clerk Haley. Trustee Collins is not joining us this evening, but we are expecting Trustee Hannan.
Thank you very much. If you'll please join us for the pledge. Thank you and welcome to everyone who's here with us this evening and to those of you watching at home. If you are here with us tonight and you would like to address the board at any time, I ask that you be recognized by the President and that you make your remarks from the podium so that the folks at home can hear and see what you have to say. First up is public comment. Would anyone like to address the board? Hearing none, we'll move on to reports of village officers. First up is the village president report. I have before you a motion to reappoint Mark Yurku to the Riverside TV Commission for a term to expire 2023. I'd ask for a motion and a second.
So moved.
By Mr. Gallegos.
Second.
Second by Mr. Jiza. As many of you probably know, Mark has been a longtime member of the Riverside TV Commission and has done an excellent job, and we're very fortunate that he's agreed to be reappointed. So are there any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Jiza.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Motion carries. That's all I have this evening. Manager Francis?
I just have one item to note this evening. I just wanted to congratulate Chief Weitzel on his 36 years with the Village of Riverside. Yesterday was actually his anniversary with the village.[138.81][138.81](APPLAUSE).
That means you have to stay at least four more years. You've got to round it up.
That is all I have to report this evening.
Okay, we'll move on now to the approval of the consent agenda. On the agenda this evening, approve the voucher list of bills September 17, 2020. Approve the village board of trustee regular meeting minutes of September 3, 2020. Review and file the Economic Development Commission meeting minutes of July 9, 2020. The Landscape Advisory Commission meeting minutes of August 11, 2020. And the August monthly reports for fire, police, and public works departments. Finally, in ordinance modifying section 2, 13-2, members appointment term removal entitled to departments, boards, and commissions, Chapter 13, Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services of the Village Code of the Village of Riverside relative to the designation of arson investigators as peace officers. Does anyone need anything removed for discussion? Hearing none, I ask for a motion and a second to approve.
So moved.
By Mr. Gallegos.
Second.
Second by Mr. Jiza. Please call the roll.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Jiza.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
So now I'm going to backtrack a second. There was something else that I was meant to mention under my report, and that's regard to the census 2020. It has been extended, as you know, the census is now going to end on September 30. And to give you some idea of where we stand right now, the percentages of, and this is all, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Trustee Evans, because you've really been the driving force behind this. The self-reporting numbers right now for Illinois are 70.4%. Riverside is at 82.4%. So we're doing really well, especially given comparison to last time around, and we're hoping that the folks that have been going door-to-door is going to be able to raise that number significantly. But if you have folks that you think might have not filled out the census form yet, or people who you think might need help filling out the census form, please get in touch with us, because it's very important that everyone be counted. Trustee Evans, did you want to add anything to that?
No.
Okay.
You've covered it.
Okay, great. So with that, we'll move on to reports of departments, commissions, and trustee liaisons. Are there any liaison reports this evening? No? Move on then to ordinances and resolutions. First up is an ordinance approving side and rear yard setback variations to allow an accessory structure, a detached garage, to be constructed less than three feet from the side and rear property lines at 471 Selborn Road. Director Apt.
Thank you. The petitioners, Michael and Bethany Smalaric, have filed their application for a variance in order to allow a detached garage to be constructed in the same location as their existing garage, which does not meet the required three-foot setbacks for detached garages in the zoning ordinance. The existing garage is located 1.93 feet off of the side lot line and about 1.73 feet off of the rear property line. The new garage will be slightly larger than the existing garage, so that setback from the rear property line will reduce to about 1.43 feet when this is constructed. The Planning and Zoning Commission did hold their public hearing on August 26 and recommended approval of the variance. You have the findings attached to the report. The petitioner is here to answer any questions that you have, and that is it.
So before we discuss, I'd ask for a motion to approve an ordinance approving the side and rear yard, rear setback variations to allow an accessory structure, the detached garage, to be constructed less than three feet from the side and rear property lines at 471 Selborn Road.
So moved.
By Mr. Gallegos.
Second.
By Mr. Jiza. Questions, discussion, concerns? Mr. Pollak?
Thank you, President Sells.
Mr. Pollak, can you pull your, they're amplifying us tonight, so we need to be close.
Thank you, President Sells, and I did attend the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and I thought they reached a reasonable conclusion in their recommendation to approve the variation. The unique condition is that it's an existing garage pad, and they're replacing it with a modernized garage that's appropriate to modern standards, which dictate that the garage be slightly larger and thus expand the footprint and has a slight further encroachment into the setback. But I did agree with the Planning and Zoning Commission that this was a unique condition, that there was a hardship, and that variation was justified.
Other comments? Please call the roll.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Jiza.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is a resolution commemorating and honoring America's POW MIA personnel. Manager Francis?
At our last board meeting, the board directed staff to draft a resolution. If you recall, last year at this time, we actually displayed the POW MIA flag in front of Township Hall. But the resolution that was approved in 2019 only applied to that year. The resolution that is being presented before you would be for 2020 and every year thereafter. It would be displayed at Township Hall on the 3rd Friday in September, which is their recognition day, let me find it, POW MIA recognition day. This year it does fall on September 18, 2020. Public Works staff already has the flag and is prepared to display it beginning tomorrow and then two weeks thereafter. The resolution is drafted. We continue to do this every year thereafter.
So, given the significance of this, let me, before I ask for a motion and a second, let me just read this resolution, so folks at home know what we're talking about here. This is a resolution commemorating and honoring America's POW MIA personnel. Whereas National POW MIA Recognition Day is commemorated each year on the 3rd Friday of September to honor those who were prisoners of war and those who are still missing in action, POW MIA Recognition Day falls this year on September 18, 2020. And whereas the POW MIA flag has been recognized and designated by Congress as a symbol of our nation's concern and commitment to resolving as fully as possible the fates of Americans still prisoner, missing, and unaccounted-for in Southeast Asia, thus ending the uncertainty for their families and the nation. And whereas the village president and the board of trustees of the Village of Riverside desire to demonstrate support for the families of all American prisoners and missing in action personnel, and desire through approval of this resolution to commemorate and honor those prisoners and personnel by recognizing National POW MIA Recognition Day and by flying of the POW MIA flag immediately below the American flag on the village flagpole outside of Township Hall for a two-week period commencing on the 3rd Friday of September every year. Be it resolved by the president and board of trustees of the Village of Riverside, Cook County, Illinois, the village president and the board of trustees of the Village of Riverside hereby recognize National POW MIA Recognition Day and commemorate, honor, and indicate support for all American prisoners and missing in action personnel. As an expression of such commemoration and honor, and to demonstrate the village's support for the families of prisoners of war and missing in action personnel, village staff are directed to fly the POW MIA flag immediately below the American flag on the village flagpole outside of Township Hall this year and annually thereafter for a two-week period commencing on the 3rd Friday of September of every year. I would ask for a motion and a second to approve.
I'll make that motion.
By Mr. Gallegos.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Hannan. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Jiza.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
The motion carries. We move on now to considerations. This evening, we have an initial discussion of the five-year financial forecast plan 2021 to 2025. Director Johns?
Good evening. Presented before you is the village's five-year financial forecast spanning fiscal years 2021 through 2025. The purpose of this forecast is to provide the board with information concerning projected revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance for the general fund. This forecast should assist in identifying areas and opportunities where the revenues and expenditures may need adjustment. Much of the information and data used in preparation of this forecast has been obtained from internal financial records and trend analysis, discussion with the various department managers concerning short-term and long-term expectations, and external sources such as the Illinois Municipal League, Illinois Department of Revenue, and other agencies that compile and publish statistical data. Several items that I wanted to highlight tonight is the reduction of several of the village's revenue sources. First, I wanted to talk about the property tax levy. Overall, property taxes are expected to increase 2.3% in the 2020 levy from the final 2019 extended levy and 1.5% in subsequent years. However, the police pension recommended levy is estimated to increase 3.47% in 2020 and 5% in subsequent years. This results in the general corporate levy expectations being relatively flat or decreasing. If you view the graph on page 104 of your board packet, you will see the police pension fund levy in green has increased dramatically since 2011. The increase from $154,000 in 2001 to $1.5 million in 2020 is approximately 10x increase in less than 20 years. You will see the proportional increase of the police pension levy illustrates that the general operations levy is decreasing. In the past, the village has elected to levy for their recommended contribution. Per capita tax or LGDF has also suffered due to the pandemic. LGDF is made up of income tax, use tax, and cannabis tax. In recent years, this revenue has become very unpredictable in collections due to decreases in distributions due to the state budget cuts. In fiscal year 2017, the state decreased distributions by 10%, and in 2018, they decreased by 5%. So far, they have not made any announcements for 2020 or 2021. The Illinois Municipal League is predicting significant decreases in income tax for 2021. Municipal sales tax, places for eating tax, and non-home rule sales tax have all seen significant volatility due to the pandemic. The recreation department revenues have also seen drastic decreases due to the mandatory shutdown of programs. The largest area of expenses for the general fund are personnel-related. 2020 estimates includes 2.75 to 3.0 increases for union salaries, IMRF increasing 10.42% to 10.55%, and benefits increasing 7.5% for HMO and PPO. The village continues to evaluate the proportionate shares allotted to the water sewer fund for general applications. Several items that I wanted input from the board for the 2021 budget are as follows. Would the village board like to levy the Illinois statutory minimum contribution for the police pension fund or the recommended contribution? The difference between these is $171,000.
Did you want us to, why don't you just lay it all out and then we'll go through it?
All the things for consideration or just the police pension?
No, the things for consideration.
Okay. The next one is would the board like to review the amount of tax attributed to the Parks and Rec levy? Would the board like staff to review general fund fees and charges? Would the board like staff to review the use of part-time and seasonal staff for operations? Would the board like to continue with the $50,000 deductible for liability insurance? And would the board like to utilize fund balance as a balancing tool for the 2021 budget?
Okay, let me, I have just to provide just a little bit more context. First, I would ask the trustees to look at page 118 of your board packet, because that tells you what our starting point is here. Without taking into consideration what Director Johns has mentioned, we are projecting a $316,000 deficit for 2021. So that is money that we have to make up. We have to find $316,000. Director Johns, can you explain to us when you talk about fund balances, like the cash flow and then the money we have in Irma and our co-op, can you kind of tell us what the various pockets of available funding are?
Absolutely. In the audit, we have, the village separates out their fund balance into non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned. Those are from least flexible to most flexible as far as designations go. The village has a fund balance policy that recommends keeping 25% for cash flow. However, this does exclude the next year's contribution to police pension fund since that it has a stable revenue source of the separate levy. We also have prepaid, which are our balances held at Irma and NSABC. These are funds that we can draw down relatively quickly and request to be cashed out. So an option for the board is to include those prepaid or a portion of them in the 25% fund balance.
How much is available in Irma and MSNBC?
In total, $873,000, but we are required to keep a portion of that there. You wouldn't want to take that to zero.
And our current 25% cash flow, what is that about, around $2 million?
2.1 million.
So, I had an opportunity to talk through a lot of this with Manager Francis and Director Johns today, in regards to the, just before we start, you start discussing this, so you understand how this all works. As you know, our tax cap is governed by PTAL, that we cannot levy more than CPI or 5%, whichever is less. So, if we can, considering the Parks and Rec question, if we were to raise the Parks and Rec levy, we would have to, and please correct me if I get any of this wrong, Director Johns, if we raise the Parks and Rec levy, we have to reduce the general fund levy. Correct?
Correct.
Because we are still capped at that amount. So, in terms of getting funding for the deficit, that doesn't advance the ball. If we were to make only the required police pension and not the accelerated police pension, that is $171,369 that could be applied to the 316. What is the anticipated surplus from 2020?
Approximately $50,000, but it is very early, and some of the revenues are still volatile.
So let's say it's 30, so we're at roughly 200. So, we need to find $116,000. One way to do this is to just let staff continue their diligent work on trying to find a way to find that money, because this is our first discussion of this. Another option, I mean, one thing, and this is my personal opinion, the Irma and MSNBC, am I getting that acronym correct? That's the only money that makes interest for us. So, that to me is like the last, the last ditch place to go to for this money. The concern is, under our current fund balance, what is the dollar, 2.1? Is that what you said? And that matches the 25% that is required?
That was the, in the 2019 audit, I haven't calculated it for the 2020 budget yet.
So we can't, what we can't do is get below the 25%, because that's what our auditors expect from us. So that is, I hope that gives you enough context, and now I'll be quiet and let you talk about this. What do we do?
Could I just ask a clarifying question?
Please, please do.
Director Johns, you mentioned fund balance transfer, and I just wanted to get conceptualized what option that is.
For the fund balance, currently, it's calculated at 25% of the following year's expenses. If the board elected to amend that policy, we could include some of the prepaid that we have in that cash flow reservation? So in that bucket that we hold committed for cash flow, we could include our balances at Irma.
Okay. And the Irma amounts, I recall, was that the return is in excess of 8%? Is that what I read?
It fluctuates from fiscal year to fiscal year. So, just to put that out there, but it is better than we would be able to routinely get. So, this is more of a conceptual discussion, because as you'll notice on the village's balance sheet, we have money allocated in different buckets.
Right.
So we wouldn't necessarily ever pull that money out, but for the purposes of rating agencies and how they look at our policy being consistent with how we financially manage the village, it would be in our best interest if we're saying that, from a cash flow perspective, we're going to allow the flexibility that to have a stopgap for 2021, so we can really fully realize of the different changes instead of dealing in a vacuum, to have that maximum flexibility to make those modifications to the policy, and we may not even see it to fruition. President Sells asked me earlier today what have been our surpluses on average. Since 2014, the average has been $184,000 in a fiscal year. That includes our really bad year in fiscal year 2017, where we actually experienced a deficit of 230. So just to put it in, to summarize it.
And then you mentioned the rating agencies, and one of the opportunities is the difference between the recommended contribution of the pension fund and the Illinois statutory minimum contribution. Do we have any sense on how that would affect the rating agencies?
At this point, no. I think moving forward, we do want to come up with a policy as it relates to pension. What we can do for fiscal year 2021 is that if we are recognizing that we will be deriving a surplus, if you recall, well, for board members that were on the board back in 2013 and 2014, when we were doing a phase-in and catch-up payment for IMRF and also for police pension, we made additional contributions above and beyond. So we can have that maximum flexibility as well to make those additional contributions should revenues bounce back. But as it relates to specifically how the standard and poor will view us doing only the required versus the recommended, obviously, it's always into our best interest to make more of a contribution. However, given the circumstances, I don't envision that we would be on an island of taking this more prudent approach this year.
That's helpful. But I would agree with President Sells's that the, you know, money at Irma, you know, I think it's, viewing that as the rainy day fund, I think, is the right approach.
I mean, I guess, I mean, I think you can see where we are right now, is that for 2021, we're basically at a break-even point. I mean, you don't ever want to assume surpluses, even though we've had a historic surplus of $184,000 a year. You don't want to put that kind of pressure on staff. I mean, you want to have a budget that is a proper budget and not dependent upon surpluses. But what I think, what I think this analysis that our staff has beautifully done, I think, is it just shows you where we are. I mean, what we need to be able to do moving forward is we need to be able to keep that 25% cash flow balance, and we need to keep Irma and our co-op funding in place as part of our interest-bearing accounts, which means going forward, 2022 and forward, we are going to have to find, and there's a finite box of solutions. You either raise fees and rates, you raise taxes, you cut services, or you reduce personnel. And that's pretty much our alternatives. So while we're going to be able to stem this flow relatively painlessly in 2021 by the options that we've been given, I think it's important for, certainly the board, I think already understands this, but I think it's important for our residents to understand where we are financially as a village and what we're going to be facing going forward. Further comments, suggestions? Mr. Gallegos?
I would also prefer not to spend down our cash reserves. That also is someone I consider for a rainy day as well, so I would prefer that. We don't touch it.
So, so are we, is there a consensus that we will make the, just the required contribution for the police pension this year? Do you have something to add, Mr. Pollak, please?
Well, I just have some questions, but if you're just looking to answer that question, I would agree that to dislevy the minimum, the state-mandated minimum on the police pension fund.
But did you have something?
Yes. So, the 316, $316,000 deficit that's shown for fiscal year 2021, does that assume just that all expenses, expenditures are just kind of a straight line, nothing but cost-of-living increase?
It does include the personnel increases for the union contracts, as well as nominal increases for non-union staff. It includes a relatively flat increase. I believe it's 1.25 in most commodities and contractual services, and some things like insurance were taken on a case-by-case basis.
Okay. Yeah, so thank you for that. Go ahead.
And you'll notice in some departments, because we knew that this was going to be a challenging budgeting year. We started our capital improvement process very early this fiscal year. We started, we've already started and had numerous budget meetings and discussions. So we have made certain reductions in different departments, but this is, I would say, the most difficult budgeting year of my career. And I dealt with budgeting during the recession. So I think strategically, creating a stopgap for the village in 2021 and allowing staff to figure out some modifications of what can be done for future and creating a strategy would be very helpful.
And then I think you answered this, but I just wanted to be clear. So the fund balance, right now, there's nothing available unless we reduce that 25% minimum. Is that correct?
For the unassigned, yes. Because right now, that has been allocated for capital. Your alternative option is that staff prioritize the capital and potentially make reductions in capital so that you can utilize your unassigned fund balance. But then that means if we delay certain capital, there are implications to that as well. Obviously, this is always the balancing.
So there is unassigned fund balance available, but it means taking it away from capital?
For fiscal year 21, yes.
For 2021, right, okay, I understand that. And then how much revenue do we actually see annually from that IRMA reserve?
So it fluctuates from year to year.
What was it last year, for example?
For last year, for the Village of Riverside, we received an additional $83,000.
$83,000 in interest income?
Correct. I'm sorry, in excess surplus. So you have your interest income and you have your excess surplus. The excess surplus is the real big dollar amount for the village, because that is, I don't want to get too much in the weeds, but essentially, IRMA collects a set amount of money for their, for your payment for membership into the pool. And then as claims complete and they close out claim years, then they return those monies back to the pool. So it fluctuates from year to year, and it also depends on how investments are doing for those respective years for IRMA.
What I'm trying to get at is, let's say we have $800,000 that we could access. If we took out $100,000, what does that equate to in lost revenue during the year? Does it mean it's the same as taking out $125,000, because we lose $25,000 in revenue? Or does it mean we lose $5,000 in revenue? Because to me, that makes a big difference.
It's really, on average, as Trustee Hannan pointed out, it's approximately 7%. It fluctuates from year to year. I would say that the range is from 5% to 7%. Sometimes you see a little bit more on other giving years, but that's a safe projection as to what they're going to see. But, so as it relates to a loss, if we're talking 100,000, then it could be anywhere from 5,000 to 7,000 that you're talking about loss in investment.
Well, if 800,000 gets you 5% revenue, interest income, I should use that term, and that means that's $4,000 a year in interest income, correct? Or is it 40,000?
So each year, it compounds itself. So to say that if we were going to get, so just to kind of frame it for you, last year, we received $83,000, the year before that, it was $113,000. And the year before that was $112,000. So it really depends on the claim years that are being closed out and those different calculation on how the investments are doing.
I guess I can just summarize my line of questioning is, I wouldn't completely rule out using that money. I agree, it's a nice, it's one of the better sources of interest income, the best source of interest income perhaps. But I'm not sure of the exact numbers, but if we had to choose between cutting service versus taking $50,000 out of that, or even 100,000, and the cost to that is $2,000 or $3,000, that might be worth doing for one year, given that this is certainly a unique year. I wouldn't completely rule that out, but it might be a last resort, but.
We do have the option of NSCBC. That one, we are not, if you recall our discussion last time, we are not accruing any interest of the direction, or the suggestion of staff was that we move that money over to IRMA. That is still a potential option, to move the money from NSCBC. Or if the board would prefer that we keep it to have cash on hand, that's an option as well. Even if we were to move it over to IRMA, and then after the second quarter, we recognize that we need it for cash flow purposes, we could always request a withdrawal from IRMA. And also, just to remind the board, prior to fiscal year 2013, and historically, the Village of Riverside would take those monies that were credited through our excess surplus and would utilize it to decrease our cost for our IRMA contribution. We started doing, we started strategically keeping those monies at IRMA, because, one, we were getting a better interest rate, and, two, we didn't need it. We were able to figure out ways to balance the budget and the village's needs at that point in time, and we went to a higher insurance deductible, which bought down our premium costs.
But just, because I really think that's a great line of questioning that you just had. But this goes back to an idea that Director Johns had about this notion of including the IRMA and co-op funding as part of our fund balance that goes toward that 25%. At that point, if we got to a point in 2021 where we needed to have those funds, staff would have, with the board's direction, they would have different alternative places to get that money from. They wouldn't necessarily have to go to IRMA or to MSNBC. They could pull it out of the, kind of the cash flow part of it. So that, I think that's a really promising idea, because it gives staff a lot more flexibility. But, you know, I mean, tonight, we don't have to decide tonight where each pocket of funding has to come from. Mr. Hannan?
As much as I enjoy reading the accountants' report, which was very helpful, you know, what might be helpful for our next discussion is to get, you know, two or three set proposals with alternative A, B, and C, so we have a concrete recommendation. Obviously, Director Johns and Village Manager Francis have a lot more history, creativity, and background in this than we can come up with on the fly. So I think it'd be helpful to talk about concrete options and maybe a matrix with pros and cons for each.
And as part of that, and I don't, Manager Francis and Director, I don't know if this is possible, but it would be interesting to see if we could get some information from our auditors about, is there a potential impact of only doing the required police contribution versus some kind of accelerated contribution? I don't know if that can be answered, but to Mr. Hannan's questions earlier, that would be nice to know.
Included in your board packet tonight, starting on page 144, is the actuarial funding report for the police pension fund, which talks about the different options and potential risks between doing the recommended versus the required. I think to throw another piece into this puzzle is, currently, the state is consolidating police pension funds. So when we talk about two years down the line, currently, they have to be 90% funded by 2040. I don't know if that will still be the case once the fully consolidated police pension fund is set up. That was consolidated January 1, 2020, and they have 30 months to actually consolidate the funds. So they're working through that process now, too.
So do you have an opinion about the potential impact of making the minimum versus an accelerated?
I think for this year, it's a good option for the village. I think when we talk to bond council and do our bond rating calls, the question they most ask is, how funded are you? And that's not going to, the difference between the recommended and the required isn't going to change that.
So our, is there, yeah?
Yeah, of course. So if we do task the board to come back with some different alternatives, would it also be possible to build some sort of a model out comparing what the costs are today? And if all the department heads went back, sharpened pencils, and gave us a comparison in those to where we could see Model A, Model B, Model C, and where they think they can identify more savings? And just the, because everything seems to be relatively flatlined on this. Obviously, there's some dips in 2020, which should be expected. But there's some things in there that catch my eye, that hopefully the department heads can look at and say, okay, you know, why is street lighting 50% or 100% less right now than what it is going to be next year? I don't really understand why, right? But that's $60,000, right? And there's just items in here. So if the department heads could come back with models for each specific cost in their department, it would help me understand things a little bit more clearly of where we could sharpen the pencils.
So if I may, just to put it conceptually, we started this process with over a half-million-dollar deficit.
Okay.
So we've done a lot of sharpening. We have collective bargaining agreements that we have to comply with. So that's a big piece of it. So if we're asking for sharpening of pencils, it's going to be cutting of services, cutting of seasonal, cutting of special events. So I just want to make sure that we're on the same page as it relates to that.
And just to echo that, you know, I got in the weeds on this a while ago.
I can't hear you.
I got in the weeds on this with Village Manager Francis a while ago, I think, in anticipation of our call with the rating agency. And, you know, my impression that I walked away with is what Village Manager Francis described is that there, you know, to the extent there's going to be cuts, it's going to be services. Or, you know, one of the recommendations was, you know, do we have part-time or seasonal workers on, you know, village maintenance, village ground crews, and things like that? So it would be a fun, my impression is that it'd be a fundamental change in the services provided. It wouldn't just be, you know, there's no fat to cut. You know, there's not anyone sitting on a giant pension pulling down, you know, 10 hours a week. It's, you know, it's a very lean staff. Village Manager Francis has done a great job on, you know, finding grants, finding funding. But I don't think it's, you know, going through department heads and figure out where the fat is. There's just none. And this is from the exercise we did nine months ago.
And I can attest to that, after having done this now for 14 years. I mean, the, it's never been an expenditure problem for us. It's always been a revenue problem. And it's always, it's always been the structural deficit that is caused by, for non-home rule communities by the tax cap. And the divergence between what we're able to levy versus the inflation that we face in healthcare, construction, infrastructure, I mean, this day has been coming. And that's why, that Manager Francis says this is the most difficult budget she's ever had, says volumes to me. And what it suggests is that moving into 2022 and beyond, there's going to have to be some very difficult choices made between services and revenues. I mean, that's really, I believe, where we are. But for our purposes this evening, I think that there's a consensus pending, if we find out something else from the auditors, that we would use the, do the required police pension. We would apply the 2020 surplus to 2021, and then have staff look at this idea of having an altered fund balance or, you know, fund policy to allow us to access a wider range of funds if it turns out that in the third quarter of, you know, 2021, there actually is a shortfall, because there may not be. But that gets us through, and it gives staff a little breathing time to try to come back with some creative ideas for us to consider.
Just one last thing.
Please, as many things as you want.
Have we explored any type of incentives for residents to, you know, just off the, just spitballing here, but let's use parking vehicle stickers, for instance. I mean, have we explored the idea of selling a three-year ticket out of the gate? Can we do that in order to try and drive more top-line revenue over the next 12 months? And there's other incentives, but I'm saying, certainly, have you guys explored different types of incentive ideas?
So if, I'll equate that to those that sell their cell towers, and you get the cash flow upfront, but you still have the subsequent fiscal years.
Sure.
So our issue, we have cash on hand. It's allowing the flexibility to utilize that cash should we need to. To do it all upfront, the only benefit would be there wouldn't be as much in administration for subsequent years for those types of things. And if you're going to have them pay it upfront, the incentive most communities do when they do multi-year for anything would be a discount on the fee, so then we're bringing in less. So that, conceptually, a good idea. However, the idea of getting it all upfront and losing revenue then for subsequent years, I don't know what the reduction potentially would be.
But have we explored a model like that where there are incentives? I mean, have we looked at any incentive programs to do that?
I don't, I'm trying to.
You don't think it would be applicable? I guess I sort of disagree, respectfully. I think that incentives to accelerate revenue is, could be beneficial. I don't know how necessarily it works in government, but I know that in private, the private sector does help. Does it mean that you have to increase your budget for future years and try to identify other alternatives? Yes, but it offers you the opportunity to do that and to go out there and try and drive more revenue and identify more revenue streams. It's just a suggestion.
I'm open to looking at it. I'm open to brainstorming.
I'll work with you on it, yeah.
I think the other thing to be cognizant of, because it is government, is if we do a multi-year and a person moves out a year and a half into it, then we've created this additional administration challenge of now we have to administer refunds and things of that sort. So that would be another consideration.
Well, not if it's waived, not if that's waived. I don't know if that's legal, if that's by law, if that's possible, but.
Well, I think we'd have to look at it as part of the modeling. I mean, if somebody is voluntarily paying in advance, if they're given a choice, right? And they make the choice to pay the three years, we may not need to give the refund, but that's something we'd have to look at.
Yeah, I'm just curious. Again, like, it's working for a lot of companies in the private sector right now, so it might be something we want to explore.
So I'm not sure, other than vehicle stickers, I'm not sure what else that would even be applicable to. Well, why don't?
I'm not looking at financial now, I'm just saying, let's explore, and I'll work with you on it.
Yeah. Why don't we have, why don't you, the two of you?
I'll bring you some Starbucks, and we'll.
Yeah, the only two, well, we do our fire alarm or our alarm permits on an annual basis. We do vehicle stickers, pet licenses, business licenses, and liquor licenses. So those would be the items.
And I get the concept. I guess I, my experience, when I first came in onto the board, is I have experienced boards kicking things down the road, and that's why we're sitting here, having this discussion right now. I don't want to do that to somebody else. But it's certainly worth exploring, absolutely. Mr. Pollak?
Well, I was just going to say, I would love to hear more ideas and more different examples. The example of doing that with vehicle stickers, though, strikes me as just borrowing from yourself, borrowing from future years for the present year. And although this particular year is worse because of the pandemic, the trend has been there for a long time, and will, if we go back to pre-pandemic situations, the trend is still going to be there, where inevitably, we're going to have shortfalls without addressing these questions. And the particular example of doing that with vehicle stickers would just make it even more difficult in the future. But if there's other ways to do it without borrowing from future years, then great. Let's explore all options.
So Director Johns, Manager Francis, do you think you have, for our first discussion, do you have enough from the board to move forward?
I believe so. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your excellent work. And we'll move on now to our last consideration, which is a discussion of possible closure of. consideration, which is a discussion of possible closure of Parkview Road. Manager Francis?
Recently individuals, we've been receiving complaints related to Parkview Road and debris and nuisance being created within the area. If you recall, back in 2015, it was briefly discussed about the resurfacing of Parkview. At that point in time, we did not move forward with resurfacing. So the Parkview Road is in poor condition. And now additionally, police are receiving calls and Public Works is having to go out and pick up debris that is being dumped in that area. It is important to note that the parcels adjacent to Parkview Road on, that is east of First Avenue, is actually Cook County Forest Preserve property. However, we prefer not to wait for them to respond to remove the debris, because that can create additional issues and hazards for the community. So recently, we've been removing the debris ourselves. So part of the discussion and what staff is asking for guidance on is due to the current condition, staff is requesting that the board have a discussion about closing Parkview. Just to provide it in context, if we elect to keep Parkview open, then we should look at resurfacing it. Just a resurface of Parkview Road would cost approximately forty-five thousand. That does not include engineering costs. And we wouldn't know the full cost until the engineer actually went out and did additional assessments. But based on its current condition, it would lead me to believe that that would be a complete reconstruction of that road, which is exponentially more.
So the land on both sides of it is Forest Preserve?
Correct.
So only the road do we own?
Correct.
Who knows how that ever happened? But it's only the road. Just to add to this, I mean, we have had conversations, and then they kind of stalled out with the pandemic. We have had conversations with the Forest Preserve whether they have any interest in that road, and whether they would be interested in trading us in some way for other parcels. So that's still out there, but that, we, we would still have the potential, even if we close it. And, but I have a question about the wording of this, where it says, close the road permanently. I mean, are we talking up, just putting up the concrete barriers at this point? Or are you talking about destroying the road?
So you have, you have two options. If we're talking about closing it permanently, that would be removing the curb cut off of First Avenue and fixing that sidewalk over there so that it is not a road. So that would be one piece. Or we could do a temporary fix, which is putting a barrier so that people are not able to access that road.
And what do you think, Mr. Gallegos?
I was going to ask what the cost of it is, because I thought the same as you, concrete barriers, and then decide later on. So what's, what's the cost of just putting the barriers up there?
For, I would ask Superintendent Tab to answer that question, but as it relates to closing it permanently, it would cost approximately ten thousand dollars, because obviously with the sidewalks and removing the curb cut and changing all of that.
And, and, because when, when we were, when we were working on, if you recall, Dan, we were looking at, at choo-choo. I mean, we have several of those big concrete.
We do have concrete blocks in-house that we utilize for either side, probably four per side. And, you know, we have them, so they're free. If we were looking to buying some, you know, five hundred dollars a piece, maybe. But that's a temporary closure. You know, if we elected to do the permanent, you know, it'd be more.
Okay.
So.
I guess, you know, if, if we look, I'd like to do it temporarily, you know, close it, we should probably have a game plan, what we intend on doing with it, you know, if we're going to close it.
I mean, and let me just follow up on that, because my thought would be, since, since those discussions with the park, with the Forest Preserve kind of stalled out because of the pandemic, if we have a temporary closure using the concrete, that would solve the dumping problem.
Correct. Nobody would be able to get back there.
And attract nuisance issue. But it still leaves us with the road, and at least that it still appears like a road, that when we're, if we can re, re, you know, reignite these conversations with the Forest Preserve.
Right. There's, there's kind of two different issues. There's the condition of the road, and there's the fact that people fly dump anything and everything. So even if we were to either resurface or reconstruct the road, at whatever the cost is, we still have a dumping issue on a brand-new road. It's just easier to get back there and dump.
Right.
You know, it's pitch black out there at night. People drive through, turn their lights off, throw everything out that they want, and then drive off, and nobody's wiser.
Mr. Jisa, you had something?
Just for Chief Buckley and Chief White, so do we use that road for emergency vehicles ever, if you're trying to get around that corner? It's right near the school, so does it provide easier access?
Correct. No, it does not. In fact, it makes it even more dangerous for us if we do go through that area to try to cross First Avenue, because it's not a controlled intersection. So we try to stay off that road as much as possible, plus the condition of the road with our vehicles. The weight of our vehicles isn't very conducive to driving on a street like that.
Yeah, I drove down through that road today. It's, it's a disaster. Other comments? Mr. Pollak?
I would be in favor of a temporary closure and then waiting to see how we dispense of the land or what we do with the land in the future.
I see, I think I see a lot of shakings of heads. Is that the consensus? Okay. So we'll, we'll do a temporary closure using the materials we have on hand. Thank you very much. Any new business? Mr. Gallegos?
Kind of do. I want to talk about Halloween. Well, you have a thought, so let's hear it.
Yeah, because we, there's already been internal discussions started like this. We were going to put this on the next agenda to have this discussion.
Okay.
Because what we're trying, what we're trying to find out is if, if we have any kind of recommendations from county, state, or federal officials regarding Halloween, so that we can have a decision and a conversation based on, on science and data. So that, that's on our radar.
As long as it's on the radar, then that's important.
Certainly is, yeah. Anything else? We have no need for an executive session, so I'd ask for a motion and a second to adjourn.
So moved.
Mr. Gallegos?
Second.
Second, Mr. Jisa. Please call the roll.
Trustee Gallegos.
Hi.
Trustee Jisa.
Hi.
Trustee Hannan.
Hi.
Trustee Evans.
Hi.
Trustee Pollak.
Hi.
Next meeting, all the motions and seconds have to come from this side of the room. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Good night.